Wasn't friendly, I got these way. Of course, I still want to be kind of his or not, I didn't pay too bad.
How you doing?
Sit down here.
Hi, Don.
Well, sit down here.
Sit down just here. Say, sit down. Sit. I take command well, you say sit.
Leon.
Leon? He's sick?
That's what he said. Only this morning he's sick.
What is the bomb?
Yeah.
This? Just one of those plug-in things?
Is it a plug-in type thing?
Yeah, you know, um... Can't think of the right name. Surge protector.
Okay. I've never seen one exactly like that.
It's a little big.
Does that do twelve balls?
I have no idea what that means. It's got a little cable thing in there too, so who knows?
Now, I'm thinking of cards made from paper. Thanks for leaving me the door. But I don't want to do signs, just what would I do with a map?
All right.
All right.
Yeah, I think I would do...
Christopher!
Mr. Porter, had you done that?
Six weeks.
You're a drinker, son.
Yeah. Just gesture your picture. You'll be fine for you. You'll be fine with them pictures. That'll get out there now. It's supposed to be down in the toilet.
Yeah, it's important.
But yeah, it's probably more better.
Yeah. One day it's just yet. Okay, the hurricane snow, I don't get the winded man across my neighbors. I thought, you know, that's why a little bit could gun home.
Make sure you mention this.
And eight and one, it was snowing. Yeah.
I saw her outside today.
Grounds covered.
Yeah.
I might just have to use the video, but if I just have to use the video on, I should do that. Hopefully, I can.
That was a beautiful one. It had a big, it was a condom, colored nice.
Are you missing a hop?
I'm fine. Not like a fox. Yeah, a flying ox.
Okay.
Your son lives in the smoking house, right?
Yeah. I'm trying to...
They think they're going on vacation.
Okay, I'm sorry.
There he is. I gave him the...
He spoke.
I did give him the...
Are you gonna go on the phone?
Uh, May.
Uh?
May.
May.
I read your second. Are you checking the dog?
A cat? Cats don't get sick.
Well, good to see you up and about. You sounded cool. I mean, you really sounded fancy.
The grand show.
I'm sure people from the... And I'm a team with six of my team.
Oh, yeah.
They were that hard, didn't they?
Oh. And you were so disappointed, but you didn't get a ballot, and I... Your favorite friend.
And you didn't get a sucker on your ballot.
I'm sorry, please say it.
If you didn't get a sucker on your ballot, I'm devastated.
Oh, God.
Or you'd get one that somebody had crushed up.
Happy though.
I don't think you can make that by boxes and order. How do you... Maybe it's still coming.
I didn't know where it was happening.
Yeah, it's just...
See, this is new.
Yeah.
It's still good weather for February.
Y'all like that Super Bowl?
I love it.
I liked it. I liked it till they had the power failure there, and I kinda lost interest.
And you go a few years ago.
It was still a pretty good game, but it was different after the power failure. I think the ball, the ball stayed for a straight over the power failure for a little while there. The San Francisco kind of... I was going for a little bit, and then they woke up, and they... Still in this game.
Yeah, let me try to keep that momentum going. Such a march.
Yeah. Yeah. They're so aggressive. Breaking up those... I thought girl up in this... They were... They made one to party. I won that game. I already saved my head, and they got a call. Yeah. I'm afraid. Yeah. Directly, I can't share everything. No, they make the same ground. Didn't seem, sometimes, so they do those... So that means...
Probably I'm so mad. Look at this. This is exciting. Yeah, but I don't think I want to be able to right now, because it's telling me that my browser isn't the new one, but it is. I'm gonna have to do...
Yeah. Yeah. You were down and bound, or... Yeah. Oh, yeah. Yeah.
That is so cool. I'm gonna stop recording this time. Just tell me my browser's... Not, you are not putting this thing. You think this is weird for you. You should get this. It's just a little... It's awesome. It's hard. It's not on you, though. You know, you've already come so... I don't know how to practice.
There he is.
I love people are not being... Well, I agree. Oh, I think that's...
Okay.
I know everybody's interested in this. And it's... Yeah. Good thing is, um, other citizens do that. I mean, maybe not over the internet, but we've done it for a long time.
Yeah.
On cable, not like... Absolutely. Like put it in City Chain Network. Yeah. It's a city itself, doesn't it? I mean, I know it costs money to do that stuff, but not in the bad news. This stuff is all pretty much free. They wouldn't let me hook into their networks. Two people that might object, just don't want it. They provide some challenges. And two, you know, I don't know if it's a lot virtual, but, you know, the ADA, the... Americans with disabilities.
Yeah, they are professions.
And... It's yummy. On there if you want. You don't have a choice. And I love your little... I try to just be fair, but what I would want to know. And that way, hopefully, not have much of a time talking. It's gonna be nice. Good. It's like she's cool. Yeah, I think her... I've been there for a little while. Let that happen a few times. That's... He's the person that mobilized. It's true. Not, not if you're...
Remember those... How would you test it? You get like eighty percent...
I think it's...
I still have to...
We're all...
Chris Hill. I ain't okay. He returned to his post. He got one panel, appreciate it, go and get another text and get his... And I rarely get one match.
He wants to come in the door because he's...
And if it counts, can master... But it's a fair for Disney.
Uh, use the day break. Coming off... We don't work caddy yet.
Oh, yeah, sure. All right.
This would be a good one. This would be...
So, John, just go right first. Jacob's... That's the... John's green there, hoping she'll hear me. I'll call you back.
Mr. Elliott?
Here.
Mr. Hoffman?
President.
Ms. Hannaford?
Grayson?
Mr. Oakley?
President.
Mr. Stevens?
President.
Mr. White?
President.
Mr. Wood?
Okay. Fire committee.
Before I call the fire committee to order, I have received some requests from my constituents, and I would like to read the statement.
This pertain to fire?
No, it does not.
Well, normally...
But it does not. There is no area under which it would fall.
Normally, if you read a statement, it's generally in council session. It's a regular council meeting, so everybody can vote or make an action on it. This way, it's no action, because there's not, we're not a council forum. You need action?
Uh, it's a request for a full council.
Well, you need to bring it to the council.
Okay. Uh, fire committee, I call you to order. And are there any changes? I move that we accept the minutes as written. Sorry, a second.
I second it.
On favor? Okay. Uh, Mr. Leslie has told me that Mike Whitaker has brought to being a sub at this point. James Robino has moved to a full-time position. And Jamie Yvara has moved to sub, had any background checks in this... And that's all the information I have. Uh, someone else has...
Got some additional information that Chief Leslie has moved forward with the junior fire program. And he was able to secure a number of sets of boots from the Union Fire Protection District for like fifty dollars. And it was thirty sets of boots. He and I also spoke this morning, and we are going to send three of the junior firefighters to training in Sullivan, Missouri. And it's like fifty bucks for the day. So, a total of a hundred and fifty dollars.
Anyone else have anything? If not?
Okay, thank you. Streets and alleys, please. Skip over police. Okay. All right. Police?
I'm dead. All basically indicating to order. I make motion that we approve the minutes from our January seventh committee meeting. I have a second?
I have a second.
Motion made and seconded, all those in favor? Motion carried. I'm sure that the majority of you, all of you probably know that Jeff Winmiller has left employment in Louisiana Police Department. Also, at this present time, Sergeant Saloy is gone during some military duty. So, we are two officers short at this particular time. So, Chief Hughes is pulling some patrol to be, uh, to help make up for this. Now, Sergeant Saloy is still involved in his probationary time. So, he, it will be extended to cover the amount of time that he's gone for his military duty. So, he has the full six-month probationary period. Chief Hughes is planning to go to some training this week. It's an active shooter or violent intruder training, like for high school, hospitals, wherever there might be a shooter. That he would be able to advise those people on how to handle these types of situations. And our police forces, they're always in training. It's an ongoing thing, but there's two or three different sessions this week that officers will be going to. Some of them are just one day, some are two days, uh, some could be longer than that. But that is also happening this month. And that's all I have. Chief, do you have anything?
Just a clarification. Their course they're going to is actually the actor shooter response instructor course.
Okay.
Since will allow me to bring back some information, we can actually just plan and prepare for anything, should something unfortunate ask.
Because he is currently the firearms instructor.
But that's, that's the course that will be on Wednesday and Thursday, so I'll be on that.
Do you have anything else, Chief?
Nothing else this time. We will be prepping for another drug attack program, and I think we'll try to have it out at the... Where the Dollar General is, and that more accessible for the public.
Bob, do you have anything?
No, sir.
Anyone else have anything for police? That's all we have, Tom.
Okay. Streets and alley. Tim's not here tonight. So, I would like to make a motion to approve the minutes of the January the seventh meeting.
Second.
On favor? And really, he has nothing else. Water committee.
I skip over... No, go. I'm going to pass that.
Okay. Water. Okay. I'm gonna call the water committee a meeting to order with the members present, our Don O'Prey, his wife, himself, whoever. And with that, I make the motion to accept the minutes of December meeting. Seconded? All those in favor?
Just as a correction, it's a January meeting.
What I say?
December.
Whenever I say December, I mean... Yeah, correct. January meeting. I don't have much. I understand that there was an accident down at the water...
Yes, sir. He hit. He fell from a top of some of the forms for the basin. He was approximately fifteen feet up in the air. And where he fell into was a space where there was absolutely no rebar. And he was tremendously lucky, blessed, whatever you want to call it. He did wind up breaking his pelvis and had six broken ribs, but no surgery whatsoever. All simple fractures. It was a ring. He wasn't tied on. That part I didn't check into.
I talked with the foreman, or the guy that was foreman on the job. He had his harness and everything. He was tied off in one position. He unsnapped, go to this next position, and had mud on his feet, and the ramp was, the catwalk was slick, and that's when he fell. He, he was in the process of re-tieing. Right. Now, how's your plan?
Un-schedule.
That's all right.
I have something to get on. On this, I had reported some months ago that we were making a claim on this advertising class action case. And, um, I didn't, and I had a lot of help on this, getting this sort of information together, getting it in there. I'm the mayor, and I'm the Christine, the water department, to pull that information together. And we were successful in the claim. And I got a check here from the city. Forty-two thousand, seven hundred and sixty-four dollars and sixty-seven cents. There you go. So, you close the file on that.
Buildings and grounds. That's all. I'd like to make a motion, we approve the minutes from the January the seventh meeting.
I second it.
On favor? That's really all I have on buildings and grounds at this time. Larry, you have Curtis Hendricks from the high school here, who wants to address the building and grounds committee. Okay. Come forward. Curtis.
My name is Curtis Hendricks, and I'm the athletic director at Louisiana High School. I talked to, spoken with Mayor Wallace several months ago about possible some renovations that are needed greatly at Wallace Park. The softball field we use is the middle field, which the Corley uses for their T-ball. But we, we're finding that it's not regulation softball size for us. There's some, there's some simple, not simple renovations, but stuff that can be done. And with the school, we'd like to kind of split the cost with the city if we can, or kind of formulate a plan on how to, how to get this done. Some of the things that we would need or would like done would be purchase a new backstop. And then we would move the home plate up ten feet to, uh, to achieve the twenty feet between home plate and backstop. I've had, I have volunteers, if we would get this done, to resurvey the field. I have volunteers for demolition and for rebuilding the dugouts. Now, don't fall out of your seats here. The estimated cost for the, for that one field in the middle is thirty-four thousand dollars, which I know is a, is a big number. Uh, the school, like I said, we have, I have, uh, from Dr. Bayes, and then we'd be able to, to split or to kind of, to help each other out with that, with that cost. My concern is, is if we don't make improvements here pretty soon, that the field will be unplayable. Some things looking forward that kind of prompted this, is we were selected to host the two thousand thirteen district softball tournament. And, uh, you know, it's a, it's a good honor for our school, brings people in our, into our community, and, and I'd like to have a good facility to host that.
You got some drawings, have you, Curtis?
I have a, a draw, yeah. That's about it. That's on the last page, is the drawing. Uh, first page kind of is the, was what would need to be done, along with, I had some people that offered some estimates, but we could, you know, if we decided to do that, we'd obviously go get estimates elsewhere too, so...
Can you check with Corley League and see if they approve this thing, or if it would be possible to shift your game to another field and redo the schedule so they don't conflict with each other?
Softball and Corley really don't conflict very much. We feel the, the field on the right-hand side, which I feel is, or I think it's fireman's field.
Fireman's field.
Uh, that's gonna need to pretty much the same, it's gonna, in addition to, you know, moving home plate up and, and resurveying everything. It's, it's really frowned upon to have a temporary fence out, outfield. So, I don't, I don't think we would be able to host districts if, if we have a temporary fence, so...
Girl softball field is what they're playing. Girl softball field has a home run fence out in, in right, left, and center field.
Right.
Which, in the fireman's field, they'd have to put up a temporary fence to meet the softball regulation.
Right.
How long do we have to act on this?
Um, no, I think we could, you know, if we started renovations, you know, in the next month or so, we could probably, I mean, probably by April. I mean, we just want to be done before the Corley starts their play in, in May.
You know, I, I have no objection to this, though. Does that sound like if, if we can do it, I'd like to do it, but I'd like to be second after the basketball court in Lincoln Park. Because that's, that's been ongoing now for, I know, two years. We'll, we'll have buildings and grounds meeting with you, Curtis.
Okay.
You can go out there with them and show them what you have in mind, and they can bring it back. The committee can look at it and make recommendations to the council.
Uh, I'll get your card.
I can slip off that any time.
Okay. Larry, if you would leave me that, and then I'll make copies.
Okay.
I have council ten copies. Please give me one, Curtis, and I can maybe...
It also has my cell phone.
Okay, great. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Curtis.
Thank you.
Well, I want to, I do, I'm serious about it. I'm gonna be second after... I, I understood that Earl was getting ready to get on that, getting that... Well, it's, that's fine. I hope they did.
I don't know if it's budgeted. What's the mission?
Mr. White?
I think it's budgeted.
That's buildings and grounds.
My, my question is, thirty-four thousand, they half of it, do we have that in our budget?
No.
So, we have to find it.
You're, you're out of range for yet. You got buildings and grounds, you got questions.
Right.
Um, yes, I'd like to know, what is the status of Lincoln Park in terms of the flagpole, in terms of the, uh, the money that the Rotary donated? The city agreed to do a lycine amount. I mean, this was a year ago. What, what's the status of all that?
I think we did do a lot, like, kind with the road and all that.
No, it wasn't for the road. That was not to cover the cost of the road. No.
I think that was asked, though, that they needed that road repaired. That was one of their wants. The flagpole, we gotta get, uh, we've got to call dig right. We have the pole. We have the place for the bottom to be put in. But we've got to find out if we can dig where we want to put it.
I thought there was an article in the paper, a letter to the editor or something at some point in town not too long ago, where it said it was already in, and then I noticed that it wasn't, so...
It was, it's on city property.
Okay, so, but the road, my understanding was, and I don't know what the rest of the council remembers, but the money that came for the, from the Rotary, and the money that the city matched was not for... but the money that came for the, from the Rotary and the money that the city matched was not for road repair. It was for things like equipment, new play equipment, that kind of thing. That was my understanding, now, am I wrong, or do you remember?
No, there is money still in the budget.
Yeah.
For parks improvements, we're just waiting for the appropriate weather.
Whether you receive any, or the road.
Yes, we did. And then, um, as far as the roadway, that was under the asphalt improvements.
Yes.
For the entire city.
Yes, thank you, that's, that was my understanding. So, you're saying you're waiting for the appropriate weather to do what? To talk about it, to order it, to decide what it is you want to get?
To redo the floor ins- within, inside the basketball court.
Okay, have you decided how you're going to do that?
Yes, we're still looking at ways, there's, there's different levelers we can use. Our concern is that if these levelers are exposed to, you know, um, below freezing temperatures, if they're going to pop or not, because obviously it's not heated. So, those are some of the things we're looking at, yeah.
You're looking at, but when do you think you will finally make a decision so that when the weather turns, you can act on it?
I think we can have something done within the next month or so.
Okay, and is that going to take all the money from the Rotary?
I wouldn't think so.
Because I know I have people up there who would really like you to look at the play equipment, which has been there for thirty years and is old.
I think that'll lead some excess monies there to address those issues.
Okay, and when might, when might you be doing that?
I don't know, the last time I talked with Bill, we talked about using a leveler and everything. And then we decided to come up and try to get that cut, whenever he could get that cut, and pour new concrete in there. That was the last I heard.
And basically, you shouldn't pour below freezing point, thirty-two degrees.
Yeah, I, I just got one comment I'd like to make and then we can move on. Is my reminder, I was under the impression that that donation was for equipment, not for the rent. The city was going to do the repairs, but we put...
Yeah, you're correct.
So much money.
It was a one-thousand-dollar match for equipment.
Yeah, and, uh...
So two thousand total for equipment?
We, we had, uh, we had...
The city would absorb the rest.
We had money that budgeted for parks, we put a sample in Sunset.
Yes, sir.
And we didn't use it all and that's what, that's mine, but, I'm done. Anybody else?
Uh, yes, uh, Matty Allen talked to me the other day about putting nineteen twenty-seven on the sign, and I hope we can do that.
Been done, it's contacted, we're just waiting again for, um... I talked to Ronnie Rue, Ronnie said he would get ahold of the gentleman that did this sign. If he can't do it, I've got a lady that did the sign going into Wallace Park, that she most definitely painted on.
Okay, I just need to go back and...
Yeah.
Not a problem.
Not a problem.
That's all I have.
Okay. Um, I've got a couple issues, um, and on the HVAC for City Hall, I received only one bid. And that was actually from the outfit that specked it out for us, that being Keck Heating and Cooling. And their total bid is, and this is for heating and cooling to do all the repairs, is one-hundred-and-fifty-five thousand and eighty-one dollars. And originally, what we had budgeted was, and Christina can correct me if I'm wrong, didn't we have twenty thousand out of the water side and eighty thousand out of the city side? So then we would have to withdraw fifty thousand from reserves to do the entire project.
But, but it, it would be cheaper to do that, right?
Yes, there, and they'll do it all in one fell swoosh.
But, and if you do, if piecemeal it, how long are you going to be in the twenty, is it a year or two?
We're, I don't think we're in any position to piecemeal it this yet. We're all, you know, um, yeah. So...
We talked about that in a work study, Chuck brought that up, I believe, that it would be our best option to take some out of reserves and get it done and get it over with. We never brought it to a vote because that was a work study, but that was the consensus of the people there to do that.
And I think that's something we would bring up to finance, uh, next week.
Oh, this is the name of the company that...
Keck Heating and Air Conditioning, and they are out of Quincy.
Thank you.
Um, I had, the only other two, um, I had Mash at first said that they wanted to give a bid, but then they were going to contract with Keck to do some of the work, so they said, they declined. Um, and I had Mr. Dewey, but I never received a bid. Yes, sir.
Could you solicit bids since you only got one?
We've already done that, we've...
I mean, could you call contractors and ask them for bids?
Eh, no, we've already advertised for it and it's been bid out.
Would it be inappropriate to do that?
I believe so, because they're going to know what, what the bid was, and they're going to try and...
That makes sense.
Yeah, that's...
But you could reject.
I could reject and start all over, but...
Have you considered that?
That's a consideration of the council, uh, it's not mine, totally, somehow.
The only thing I'm concerned with since we've only got one bid, uh, maybe a good bid, it may be a bad bid.
All I can say is, this is the outfit that, I, I won't say this is the outfit, but the same individual I had working on the system since I've been here is employed by this outfit. And I don't have any reason to doubt him or what his recommendations are, because every repair that we've made has realistically saved us money, so...
It would be difficult to go back and get bids after you've given one bid already, and then you've got a foundation work on it, it'd be kind of difficult to do that.
And then, like I said, as I, as I said, this outfit, because I don't have the technological expertise, I asked them to draft the specs, and then when I put it out for bid, I basically said, either provide me with this equipment or something that is comparable to it, and provide me the documentation that shows that, and I did not get another bid.
Did their bids also include all the free information that you got?
Yes.
They're charging, they're not charging?
No.
Mr. Kenny, do you consider this a realistic bid?
I do. Considering the enormity of this whole process, they're moving the cooling towers, the compressors and everything. Um, we're getting rid of the electric costly heat here, no offense to Amrit. But it'll be a boiler system, so, um, I feel would be cost-saving for the city.
If you think it's a realistic, then I think we should go that direction.
And as I said, what we would need to do was to take it before finance and appropriate the additional funding. That's all I have.
This doesn't have to be brought in front of full council, but it goes with this.
Oh, yes, it does, yeah, but most sure...
Take it through finance and then make a recommendation. Give it all you have.
Uh, I've got one other thing, a minor thing, and I was approached by Pat Radford as far as the murals and what the council would like to do with the murals, they're willing to donate them. But I know we kind of had a moratorium on them, so I need your advice on how to, uh, respond.
My recommendation to the council is to give them to the museum.
I think that would be up to that, to those you would want to give them to the museum or not. You're probably right there. Somebody need to ask?
Yes, ma'am.
It would be very difficult to put something in that space that had nineteen sixty-two on it, because the nineteen fifty-six people would want to put something, and the nineteen seventy people. I think because the date is on, uh, the murals, it would cause a conflict. I think the murals themselves are excellent.
Yes, they are.
And, but the date is going to be a hangup, because everybody would want their class.
Sure. So, maybe that's something that Pat could address?
I'll, I'll get him to...
You're very good.
That's all I have. Grant committee?
Call the grant committee, getting to order, make the motion, we approve the minutes of our January seventh grant committee meeting, I have a second. All those in favor? Motion carried. The grant that was for building in the industrial park, has that been signed, sealed, been delivered, then?
We're not totally, because we're still waiting on the financing aspect of Press Journal and who they financed it through. Um, I will be having a meeting next week with, uh, Carolyn Weisscarver in PCDA, but it's, it's just a little glitch, don't see any problem coming forward, so...
We've dotted our i's and crossed our t's. We're waiting for Press Journal to do the same thing.
To lock in the financing.
Okay. Uh, Kent?
Yes, sir.
The, some kind of an update on the housing demolition?
I received contracts, middle of last week, for each separate property. Uh, all the property owners have got contracts now, they're looking them over. Uh, three of the property owners, two live in St. Louis, one lives in Peoria, so I had to mail them to them. They should be back signed by the end of the week. Uh, then the mayor signs the contracts and the demolition company, and when they sign it, we'll date them. I'm hoping, you know, possibly Friday or Monday, next Monday. And when we date it, they have ten days from that date to start demolition. And the demolition contractor is ready to go now, so I'm saying, hopefully, ten days, two weeks tops will be...
Is there a timeframe as from start to finish?
Yes, sir, they have seventy days, start to finish. Tear all ten houses down, uh, fill in the crawl, basement's crawl space with dirt, seed it with grass seed and straw in the property. So, you can, you're probably looking at ninety days, start to finish, hopefully.
That's the only thing I have, anyone else have anything for...
Couple.
Okay.
Uh, we should hear by the end of this month regarding the recycle grant on the benches that I applied for, um, for the riverfront and other parks, um, that should be forthcoming. I've got a grant that's due mid-March, which would allow us to fund for, um, engineering services that I will utilize for a, um, water tower out at the industrial park. They will pick up, basically, uh, Missouri Department of National Resources will pick up the cost for the engineering review. And if we can proceed, like I hope we can, with a ground-level tank and pumps, which would provide fifth gear and the rest of the west end with what we need. But that would pick up the engineering fees. Uh, the other one is, uh, the annual TRIM grant is coming around. If you can think of any, um, and I'll get with you on the details of the TRIM grant, we used it once before. So, uh, there's a possibility we may be able to use it again. That's all I have.
Anyone else have anything for Grant?
Today, uh, we had a speaker at the Chamber of Commerce from the, uh, Mark Twain Government Group.
Regional Council, yeah.
Regional Council. And she seemed to think it might be possible to get the safe, um, safe sidewalk thing through, even not owning the property. So you might want to check with her and see what she has to say.
Yeah, and I think as you and I discussed, um, the school district has the better, since we do not own the property, so... Um, that's something I'd be happy to work with them, so, but I'll get in touch with them.
She can't work on it, Robin said she can't work on it because she's part of the, um, screening group that goes over from MoDOT.
Oh, okay.
She can't work on it, she can answer questions.
So I could go through PCDA?
Yeah, she, Robin can't do it because she, since they're funded through MoDOT, that's one of the things that they do.
Okay.
Anything else? That's all we have, Tom.
Okay, ordinance?
Call an immediate view order, make a motion, we trust the minister, last meeting, we're ready.
Second.
All in favor, carry. I have an ordinance here, it is presented by City Hall, and it's to comply with state, oops, state law. An ordinance to amend municipal code section one-one-five-point-zero-three-zero. Be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Louisiana, County of Pike and Missouri, amend city code section one-one-five-point-zero-three-zero, holding more than one position as follows with section one. Amend city code section one-one-five-point-zero-three-zero to be as follows. Section one-one-five-point-zero-three-zero, holding more than one position. For the purposes of this section, membership of the volunteer department, fire department of the city shall not be considered to be employment or appointment. Any person who is employed by the city as a full-time, regular police officer shall not be eligible for membership in the volunteer fire department, section two. With the section of this ordinance, all ordinance that are portions thereof in conflict here, which shall be condolled void to the extent of that conflict. Section three, this ordinance shall be in full force and shall affect from and after his passage and approval. What's, uh, the motion we accept?
Me and I'm on this, if you'd like to have some discussion about this.
Mr. Allen?
Yes, I am, when there is no one, uh, to...
No, actually, you, you wasn't ever on the ordinance committee, that seat is vacant, so is it...
You don't need that, I...
I said I would talk to the ordinance committee, and I talked to the ordinance committee, and they said we have one month to go, and they just like to have it back.
That's fine.
Anyway, we need a second before we can discuss it.
I made a motion, second, discussion?
Go. Ruth?
I have a question. Chairman?
Okay.
What particular state statute does this ordinance, as it is, conflict with?
Mr. Rat?
Do you have one in mind?
No, apparently you have one in mind, because that is the reason that's been given for changing it, that it's in conflict with a state statute. And my question is, what is the number of the state statute this city ordinance, before you change it, conflicts with?
It's to establish it as a state statute.
Oh, for God's sake, is that...
State statute says this is the proper...
State statute says this is the proper ordinance.
What, what it's saying is, right now it says that, uh, the man that works for the city can't run for a public office. That's a violation of his constitutional rights. And under the handover, what was it?
Hatch.
So, Rapp.
The head's for, it's only federal.
I find it, as, as a member, a member of the ordinance committee, I want to say something. This ordinance has been passed to the full council, it's done until next week. I guess we'll go. As passed this ordinance, I just tried to answer your question.
I had initially.
May try to answer your question.
If I'm right, what I'm saying.
Initially Chairman, initially Chairman of the ordinance committee, my question was, because this is what was said in the very beginning. It was said that the reason for changing our city ordinance is because it conflicts with the state statute. My question is very simple, what is the number of the state statute this conflicts with?
And Mr. Rapp's gonna answer you.
Thank you.
Uh, let me give a written answer to this because I don't want to get into a protracted discussion about this. We did go, kind of go through this, and I got a folder of these notes, and those are some of them, and give a written.
Don't let him do this.
That's where he would be handled, go to council, he'll have a reason for it, he'll have a written response after that council, which will be one deep, uh, let's see, uh, the latter.
Will this be before the council votes on it? Excuse me, I have another question, will this answer come before the council votes on it?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to call full order, sir. Nobody is addressing you, and Robert Rule of Order require that, I'd like you to make a judgment on it.
Thank you.
If Mr. Rapp has time to read, gets that finished, can get you a copy, he will.
It's not me getting a copy, Chairman.
Who needs a copy, you're answering the question.
The council needs.
I also would like to make another point of order, nothing can be discussed until that point of order is ruled on by you.
Point of order, go to the next segment. This, uh, ordinance submitted by Mr. Monroe Elliott. The purpose is to abolish the requirement of a signed agreement contract and establish a procedure of appointing the city administrator. An ordinance to amend City Code section one one five point two zero zero. Be it hereby ordained by the City Council of the City of Louisiana, Pike County, Missouri, to amend City Code Article six, Chapter one one five, Section one one five point two zero zero, as follows to wit, section one. To amend section one one five point two zero zero to read as follows. Section one one five point two zero zero, appointment. A qualified person shall be annually appointed by the mayor, and such person appointed shall be subject to the approval of the City Council prior to taking office, section two. With the adoption of this ordinance, all ordinance or portions thereof in conflict herewith shall become null and void to the extent of that conflict, section three. This ordinance shall be in full force and effect from and after its passage by the City Council of Louisiana, Missouri. What's your question?
I may be motionably accept this ordinance.
Second, I'll second, vote. You're taking it to the full council. I'll save this one for dessert. This is an ordinance submitted by the ordinance committee to update City Code Chapter two ten, Animal and Fowl Ordinance. We had a work study on this, and several people from the citizens took part in that, and I think they're in real time. Uh, I have, or neither Larry nor Monroe has received any response from the public, uh, or the council concerning any changes in the way that it was presented at the work study. All the council people have a copy, and anyone else that wants one can get one. The only change that, that I see that I would like to make is, I would like to add to section two ten, one point, point one three zero, license and registration, to give a copy of an ordinance with these licenses purchased and they sign with and receive the ordinance. So as they are in violation, they can't say, well, I didn't know. That's the only change that I think is gonna be made in this. Uh, Chief Hughes had some input into it, and I think that with the exception of the dangerous dog definition, uh, there is a part in there that says that animals cannot be confined to, uh, to a certain area with certain temperatures, and I think that was one of the issues. As far as the pot, pot-bellied pigs that you wanted to mention in there, no one wanted to do anything with that. So there's not going to be anything, you know, pot-bellied pigs.
But holes are in, you can't have holes, for this ordinance, you can't have holes in town, car doesn't dig a hole, you can't have a hole in town. You call it a pet, but it's still a hole.
I, I guess it's appropriate that we read. We're gonna cross our bedroll, and we're. We've got, uh, nine pages.
There was a motion made here several months ago that when we do this, the copies would be laying on that podium, they're not there, like they said they. So the public could read it, and that, that's why we made that motion and passed that motion to do that. Monday night, we have them all there. But that, you know, I would suggest only the headline, and I keep getting yours all the time. They're having, they're, they'll be there next week for the public to read, they should be there tonight.
Yeah, they should be there, uh, the only problem with that, the public's not gonna be there half the time. Would these be available, City Hall, if somebody wants to come and get one?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Yerney?
Uh, as a state law read, you don't have to read them at these council committees, actually. It's only at the council meeting where you're gonna take action on them, but by then you're gonna have them here, so you don't have to read the whole thing anyway, just read it by the head.
Okay, if anyone in the audience would like to, I'll be second stop, and they'll want to City Hall, pretty lengthy, covers quite a bit of ground. Do I make a motion, we take this to full council?
I second the motion.
All in favor? I think that's all.
Okay, if nothing else, we will adjourn from here.
Don't get dried out, y'all. And. Proof due tomorrow, gotta have it, but don't get.
Well, this is a public comment part of the, the regular council meeting, so you could say anybody in the public who wants to submit a little question, then we. See, you see that, you know, Ronnie, all she wants to discuss with the public during the committee.